Good evening. We will call the October 12 Kittle Hill's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we enter our moment of silence, just want to express my condolences and ask for you to give some families your thought. Mike Gray with our Public Services Department, his father passed away since our last meeting. And Nora Yakobi, she's with our Finance Department, does a lot of our IT work. Her father also passed away since our last meeting. So as we enter our moment of silence, if you would please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we'll call for a moment of silence, please. First item this evening on the agenda is the Agenda Approval.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please sign up by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the first time set aside for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone with us this evening that would like to speak on any topic to come do so. We do ask if you're speaking as an individual, if you try to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would try to limit those comments to five minutes. When you approach the podium, if you would please just identify yourself by name and address. And Mary, did anyone sign up? Okay, that's okay. You don't have to sign up. So if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, you just raise your hand to be recognized and we'll invite you to the podium. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this first public comment time? No takers? Okay, well, there's another opportunity later on in our meeting. So with that then, we will move on to the first presentation that we have under Introductions and Presentations. And the first presentation this evening is the NOAA RIP Current Award. And I'd like to ask Dave Elder to come to the podium, please. I had the pleasure back in August of joining Dave on the beach for a beautiful day to receive an award, an award for NOAA, for all the tremendous work that really Dave has led and initiated with respect to RIP Current education and awareness. And the work that he has been doing right here in our wonderful town caught the attention of NOAA, and they came up from Wilmington to do this presentation, but also shoot footage. And I'd love for Dave to tell us a little bit more about what they were doing when they were here, and then I'd like to present this back to you.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much for your time this evening. This has been a long campaign, starting about seven or eight years ago. I had an idea one day, I can predict RIP Currents, and I'm not being arrogant, but I can do it. So I thought, why can't we use ambient information from, that the computer has on it from wave data, et cetera, wind direction, to use, create a model? And approached somebody at the Army Research Pier, one of, one of his son was actually working for us, as a guard at the time, this is Jeff Hanson. And he's a wave modeler. He thought perhaps that there was some credibility to the idea. We pursued it. We kept pushing through it. On about seven years later, we got some more, we had, by that point, we had published, I authored an article with a PhD student at the time, guy named Greg Dusek. Greg then got a job at NOAA. And we never really had a budget, we never really had anything but time of people that they agreed to donate into this program. Since then, we have wave modelers, we have had graphic imagers, morphologists, a bunch of people with PhDs, very, very intelligent people, have been listening to me talk about waves and trying to get them to focus on this and that. We have a working model. The model right now is in the process of being beta-tested on both coasts. In 2017, the model that we came up with right here in Kittle Hill's will be rolled out in some form as a national RIP Current model, using the work that we started right here. And that's the science side. That will hopefully be an application, something like an application on your cellphone. It'll ping out your location, tell you what your risks, when it will come on, what it will be like, and give you good information on what to use. Then we realized, as a sidebar, they kept saying to me, what is a RIP Current? And none of these morphologists, none of these very intelligent people, really had any clear idea of how a RIP would work. And it led to one day where I said to Greg Dusek, don't come to the beach unless you bring a swimsuit. And I dragged him into the water, and I got bored after about 10 minutes, and he spent about another half an hour exploring the RIP Current that I showed to him. He got very interested in it, and we started understanding that there was a chasm in the information that people didn't have that came to, come to, came to the beach. They understood perhaps undertow, they understood perhaps riptide, but they didn't understand RIP Current and how it was a morphological event that's happening in the sandbar near the shoreline, and how to interact with it. And how it isn't necessarily, it might be a panic-inducing event, but it doesn't need to be. It should more be, let's fill in the information, the low spot with, the low spot in the bar, the low spot in the information in their heads with a lot of good saturation, but how do we do it? So now we're, actually, just this last week, I was just showing some pictures to the fire chief over there. Chief Tony and I were looking at a dye release that we did in a RIP Current in the south end of the town, using a drone overhead. CSI was doing the footage, Greg, John McCord was doing the footage. And everybody's very, very excited about it. So we're not done. The model hopefully will be up and running on NOAA's webpage in 2017. And this is something that I'm in for the long haul. This, I'm just very glad to have this recognition to recognize that this is sometimes what I do when you all are wondering what I'm doing. You know, in the winter, when, when there's not a whole lot of people on the high waterline looking at the ocean, I'm thinking about how to try to make the total safety package. And we're not done. This is, this working group that we've come up with at NOAA is looking at other problems, other safety issues like shore break and other things that are ongoing, and how we can make that environment more safe, not just for us here, but also in other markets. So, thank you very much.
That's great. Well, I would like to hand this back to you, because it really is, is an accolade to the work that you've been doing. But the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's National Weather Service and National Ocean Service, you know, wanted to know what NOAA stands for. But anyway, they presented this to the town of Kittle Hills, but really it's for the work Dave has, has been doing, for the outstanding service in providing research-critical observation of RIP Currents by Kittle Hill's Ocean Rescue. And a couple of your gentlemen joined here in the back, so welcome, guys. Thank you, but thanks so much for all the work.
Thank you for having me.
Next, under Introductions and Presentations, Mr. Ron Curtis is here with other members from the Lions Club. The North Carolina Lions Visually Impaired Persons Fishing Tournament, I think, kicked off today, right? Or, no, next week, next Monday. So Ron, would you like to come and tell us more about the tournament? Or introduce?
If I could see to our director, Glenn White.
Absolutely. Glenn, welcome.
Thank you very much, and it was really great to see that presentation. Just one more thing in the land of beginnings that will give us years from now the opportunity to brag on something else that was started here. And one of the things, the thing that we're talking to you about tonight started on the Outer Banks and is the largest in the world. I am Glenn White. With me tonight is our President, Bob Walton, and his wife, Harriet, our Vice President, Ron Curtis, and our Treasurer, Bob Christensen. And we really thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, to share with something that we are very passionate about. Now, many of you in, in town know about it. Many of you sitting on the board here have supported it. Mayor Sheila Davis, who went from our auction, and Brandy Reubottom, and I see her daughter over there, who I remember when she was born, and makes you feel real old. And then you look over here at Dana Harris, and I asked him how old his oldest child was, he said 32. Well, at 32, when I was a young reporter covering everybody here and was doing the Angel Gift Program, he had his son, who was at about five at that time, take his allowance and come to the radio station to donate that week's allowance to help a child get Christmas. We've had your Mary Quiddly, and Debbie Diaz, and Steve Michael, and Brandy, and then Travis, all of you who have at some point either supported our auction, and I want to make sure I let you know that Sarah McDowell, one of your police officers, donates her time and comes out and helps weigh fish, or whatever they do on the fishing pier with those fish. What I'd like to do is to have you see the video, and then I will make a few comments and answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Do we, I'm sorry, we're, there might be a breakdown in communication, the video, is there a link for the video?
We, we, didn't you drop it off?
Uh, yes, we dropped it off at Mary's office.
Hand me my pocketbook, if I have one. If not, I've got one, I know, in the car. I don't know if there's one in...
Can we access it online?
Uh, you, well, yeah, you can try to access it online, let's see if it works. Tell me where to go. WWWVIPfishing.org.
NCVIPfishing.org.
Can someone say that, just one person?
Victor, VIP fishing.
V.I.P. fishing.
NC.
NCVIPfishing.org.
NCVIPfishing.org is the website, and there should be a link to the, do you see it?
It's coming. One sec. With all these great minds in the room, we're gonna get this, no worries.
Well, while they are trying to access, and I will tell you that this is the largest event of its kind in the world, not just the United States. It has been, it was verified in 2010. It is the largest gathering of blind individuals of its kind in the entire world. We bring 528 blind and visually impaired to the Outer Banks with their sighted guests to spend three days working, playing, having a vacation, learning independent living events. And it's all done here on, we use 10 hotels, in fact, Sue works with us at Nag's Head Inn. We have 10 hotels that put our folks up. We have about 300 volunteers who come in from all over North Carolina and different places to be able to support this event. They pay out of their own pocket to come and do the work. Then they come back in off times during the year and actually spend time and money here on the Outer Banks. Have you found it, Ron? Yeah, here it is. I have always been told it's better to give than to receive. And as a child growing up, I never knew how that would work, you know? I was wanting the Christmas presents and that sort of thing. To me, I'm the one who gets the most out of this event. They talk about how hard you work. You don't realize you're working hard because it is something you just absolutely love to do. And I'm just one of hundreds of lions who feel that same way. We don't get that opportunity to walk next to those we serve. And to be able to do it is just so special. The VIP Fishing Tournament is an independent, living, three-day experience for the visually impaired of North Carolina and other states in the country that are now participating in the National Visually Impaired Persons Fishing Tournament. An opportunity for them to experience the same things that sighted folks experience when they go on vacation. I don't think that I had thought that this event would ever grow to this big. But I have always envisioned that it would even be bigger than it is today. I think the most challenging part of pulling off a tournament of this size is working with volunteers. Making sure that you've got the volunteers you need. They come from all over the country, and they are coming at their own expense to be here to work. And we certainly do appreciate it.
Couldn't do it without the volunteers. We couldn't put it on at all. I mean, the volunteers are crucial. This is the largest gathering of blind people for a single project in the world. I went to the piers, I saw the preparation that went into that, and all the excitement on the part of the VIPs. I just sort of got hooked.
Hey, you got me one, you little devil.
I got a fish!
She's got chips in it.
All right. I know, Daddy, sweet little wing. Here we go!
Is that that same fish you're getting?
I don't care, mine now.
You got the fish?
I forgot, it's small.
Yeah, they're slimming, yep.
I have been coming here, this is my second year. It changed my life because I tried so many new things, and I experienced so many new things. I could smell like the ocean and hear waves. I'm like reeling in, and that's the most fun in this part. It was like exciting, it was really exciting.
Well, someone told me, why don't you come to the fishing tournament? I never knew there was one. So I said, all right, I'd love to go. And that's how I started. It's great, I got a fish here. I do a lot of going to concerts, fishing, boating, do all sorts of things. It's kind of weird. I'm gonna be 101 in two months, December 29. See my little, should I kiss the little baby?
It's wonderful to be able to see the VIPs who come to see the show and to be able to experience art that they created.
It is, it is, it's permanent, uh-huh.
We invite the public to actually come and to experience the show from a very different viewpoint. Be able to hand them a pair of glasses, or to be able to give them a blindfold and say, we want you to experience this show as our VIPs do. And it is amazing to hear the comments of what it actually means for them to see this exhibit in a very different way.
I mean, if you don't have fun, they don't have fun. So I make sure I have fun, so I know they're having fun. Such a great opportunity for all of the individuals to participate, and they get to see you and do things they wouldn't normally, you know, have an opportunity to participate in otherwise. I think that, to a lot of people, it's a vacation. And I mean that by, it's a vacation from their everyday life. If you come to the fishing tournament, you're gonna be able to do things that you never thought you would be able to do.
I believe anyone can do anything they want if they want to. Most such ways, no.
It's the only one. There's not another event like it in the world.
I think it's so special because you get to be with other visually impaired people, and we have something in common with them. Because we all can see, and we are all like experiencing it together.
This allows the visually impaired to know that the lions that they work with are like a sense of family.
They make connections that these volunteers keep up with these visually impaired folks all year long. It has changed my life because I have met so many new friends, not only across North Carolina, but across the world, as I have traveled internationally on behalf of the fishing tournament.
My tide of luck, I think, is changing. When I was in eighth grade, I won a toilet seat.
It's my first time here. Thank you.
I thank you very much. But I want to take a moment also to thank every one of the volunteers here. You guys are amazing, unbelievable, unbelievable.
As one of my board members has said, he doesn't know which he loves most. The VIP Fishing Tournament or Christmas.
I'm gonna cry too.
Come on, baby, let's do it.
So for a few minutes tonight, so for a few minutes tonight, I want you all to stop and think about how blessed we all are that we can see this beautiful land that we live in and the ocean. We hear folks, you might have listened to a couple of them, talk about first time hearing the sound of the ocean, or feeling the sand, because many folks have never, that get on a bus and come here, have never been to the Outer Banks before. And they're stepping out truly on blind faith to come here to experience this. You saw young folks, and I want you to know that we have Leos. We had about 76 the first year from Manio, and then about 35 or 40 from First Flight. We now have 15 to 20 that come from Gates County, and about 30 to 35 that come from Edenton, so that they can actually volunteer on the piers. On Fishing Day, we invite any of you who would, might like to come out on Tuesday, the 20th. We use four piers and two headboats. The pay is simple, we'll give you a lunch, which comes from Kentucky Fried Chicken, but we would be delighted to have any of you come, spend a little bit of time, or all day, if that's what you can do. If you would like to volunteer, we just ask you to let us know so we can see what pier you want to go to. If you happen to live closer to one of the other piers, we can get you there. And we're very proud to tell you, as we leave tonight, that we were named by the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce in Charlie Akot as the 2015 Nonprofit of the Year. This is our 33rd year, and a lot of folks are just learning about us, but we've been around for many, many years. And we appreciate very much the support and the opportunity that you have given us tonight to be able to share our passion. If anybody has any questions or comments, we would be delighted to hear them or to answer any questions.
Glenn, thank you so much. Questions or comments?
I have a little, a fun little story. Nag's Head Inn, along with many of the other hotels that have been putting up the VIPs that come into town. And last year, my wife was checking a person in, just a regular person, and one of the VIPs came up and was being checked in by another desk clerk. And Sue said, excuse me, she said, that's one of the VIPs, their welcome packages over there. And the woman said, what do I have to do to be a VIP? She said, first of all, you have to be blind. And the woman said, no, I'm okay.
Well, one, one other cute thing, and we'll let you go. We had folks, we had volunteers who were here from other parts that don't know much about this area at all. And we put a ribbon on their name tag for where they're gonna be fishing. So for this particular woman, it was Miss Oregon Inlet. And she went in a restaurant, and somebody was all excited and wanted to meet her because she was Miss Oregon Inlet.
Hey, Glenn, before you step away, if anyone's interested in volunteering, what's the best way for them to get in touch, whether it's you or Ron, or how would they do that?
Ron or me, if you happen to, my number is 202-2329 is a cellphone that stays on my hip. And then, of course, you can get Ron at 202-1996, and we would be delighted to have you volunteer. And if you can't volunteer, if you can just come by, stop by, walk down the pier, speak to them, and let them know that you would, that you appreciate them being in the area, it would be appreciated.
Absolutely. And that really is an exceptional video. Thank you for sharing that.
We no longer do the blind car rally.
Yeah. We used to do a blind car rally. Law enforcement was concerned, they thought blind people were driving. It was actually a sighted person driving, not knowing where they were going. The blind person had the directions in braille and had to give the instructions. And so if the person got lost, they were in a heap of trouble.
That didn't work with your brother?
No, it didn't work with my brother.
Great. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Thanks again. It's wonderful. Bless you. The third thing under the presentations is our ice cream social and cookout tomorrow night for the town of Kittle Hills. We're hosting that at Aviation Park. It's from 4:00 to, 4:30 to 7:00. And the weather is supposed to be beautiful, so I think, I checked, unless something's changed since early this morning, it's supposed to be 80 degrees tomorrow and sunny, so there's just really no excuse for not coming out and enjoying this great event. It's continued to grow. I think last year, between the folks that were doing the music from First Flight High School and First Flight Middle School Jazz Bands, the volunteers with the town and the Fire Auxiliary, all the folks coming out, we had close to 200 people there. Fire Auxiliary, all the folks coming out, we had close to 200 people there. So a really, really great event. There's demonstrations by our police department. The Roller Derby Brigade is also going to be out there doing a roller derby demo. And OBX Storm is going to be doing a human foosball demonstration. If you haven't seen that before, it's worth coming out and checking out. And then, of course, we'll be serving up hamburgers, hot dogs, and ice cream. Absolutely ice cream. And what a great, I mean, we couldn't ask for better weather in October to have 80-degree weather on our ice cream social afternoon. So please come join us. Aviation Park tomorrow afternoon, 4:30 to 7:00. Anything I left out?
There is ice cream, right?
Absolutely. And I think more than one flavor. And there's fixins.
Lots of fixin's.
Margaret Clark makes the best milkshakes in the world.
Oh, the milkshakes are good.
Not to put her on the spot. She'll be tired again tomorrow, now that we've done extra advertising for those milkshakes. Actually, there's always a huge line for milkshakes. That's true. Great. And this is really a wonderful, the staff do a great job putting this on and serving ice cream, and the Fire Auxiliary for cooking and serving all of the hamburgers and hotdogs. So please come join us tomorrow. It's a lot of fun. Okay. We'll move on then to Old Business. We have one item under Old Business, and it's Discussion and Possible Guidance on Oceanfront Large Single Family Dwellings. If you all recall, some of you in the audience may recall, we hosted a joint planning session between the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board back in August to kind of have an exploratory conversation about the size of oceanfront, this is for single-family oceanfront dwellings. Several commissioners had received messages or concerns from citizens about some of the massive size of some of the dwellings on our oceanfront. And so the purpose of that meeting was to look at, to look at the complexity of the issue, because at first glance, it might seem like it's very simple, just make them smaller. But there's economic implications of doing that. There's also folks that have purchased the land, looking at their return on investment. When you make a decision, there's consequences or factors associated with that. But on the flip side, there's an appearance concern that was brought up, and there's also a safety concern. At what point is this really not a single-family dwelling, even though that's what it's classified? But when you're looking at 24 bedrooms, is that almost a mini motel? And you have safety factors with egress and whatnot. At that meeting in August, there was consensus that we should continue the conversation. There wasn't anything that jumped off the pages, this is the absolute way to go with looking at this, because of the complexity of the nature. But there was definitely a feeling, or a description from the commissioners and the Planning Board members, that we should continue this dialogue. We agreed to bring it back to this meeting, to try to continue this discussion, to see if we could come up with any guidance to provide staff, that then they could take to the Planning Board. And that's where we are tonight, to restart the discussion and see if we are able to come to any consensus to be able to provide guidance to the staff. So with that, I'll pause, and we'll kind of open the floor for discussion, and any thoughts you all may have since our August meeting.
Well, what is the actual definition of "single-family"?
Meredith, I'm looking at you on that. And I guess it depends on from whose classification. Do you want to start with that? And I have some thoughts on that.
I'm not a North Carolina Building Inspector, so I'm going to give you what I understand. But a single-family dwelling is what a contractor presents as a single-family dwelling, and multifamily or independent living units. A single-family dwelling is one living unit that provides cooking, sleeping, and bathroom facilities. It's not segregated, and there's access by all occupants to the entire house. That's a single-family dwelling. You move to a duplex when they're too independent. Same criteria, same three things, but they don't have access to each other, even though they're under one roof. Multifamily, same concept. Hotel goes to a different level. But duplex and single-family dwellings are controlled by the Residential Building Code. There are some requirements for duplexes for fire separation and things of that nature between the two independent units. But then multifamily, hotel, motel, and then everything else that you would think of, falls under the Commercial Building Code. And that has additional, a lot more components that are required as far as electrical and fire.
And that definition isn't something that we control. In fact, there is a case with the, a huge home that was built, it's more of an event home down in Carova. And there was, I don't know if it went to litigation, but there was a difference in rulings between the Insurance Commission and the, I guess, State Building Code. And basically, because it's just one kitchen, even though it may be a 4,000-square-foot kitchen, it was a 30,000-square-foot home, the Insurance Commission was saying maybe it could be considered something other than a single-family dwelling. But at the end of the day, I believe that hearing was that it's not. It still fits the single-family dwelling.
You can have multiple kitchens in a single-family dwelling, as long as there's access to the entire dwelling by all occupants. So you could have five kitchens. And some of them do have multiple kitchens. Some have a kitchen on the ground floor for the pool area, and some have a kitchen on the top floor for the dining area. But it's not just a single of anything. It's the access to the structure, and that the occupants all have access to the entire thing. There's no barriers that prevent free movement among the entire structure.
So I guess, were you wondering if there was a way to change the classification? And that's not within the town's jurisdiction.
That's State Building Code.
Yeah. Jurisdiction did. I think it's been tried. This is what was happening down in the Carova area, and it didn't get very far. Comments, thoughts?
So I don't think any new information has come my way. I have been tracking some of the comments that have been posted online. Doesn't seem to be a whole lot that would honestly be beneficial to, to the conversation at this point. I've heard from, I mean, one of the comments that, in the public comment that we have on here, was that, you know, not all of the units had been fully utilized this year. I'm wondering if that in itself is going to help govern future requests. I mean, although we do have a new one already on the books, right? A new dwelling? Large dwelling?
We have a large structure in construction right now.
It's in construction. So it'll, it'll be interesting to see how many...
It's not our largest square-footage dwelling. It's our largest bedroom number, but it's not our largest square-footage.
Right. That one's 24.
24.
So I mean, it'll be interesting to see if, if that helps with, with it, and helps. I think that the challenge that we have right now is folks that have invested large sums of money into oceanfront property, and then have the restrictions placed on them. Certainly not an easy answer at this point. I wouldn't be in favor of dropping this, but I would be in favor of having updated conversations on it as we go forward, just to make sure that we don't lose sight of it, and that we take new input as it becomes available, and bring it to the table.
Yeah. I'm kind of in the same quandary. I wish there was an easy answer. I think there's a fine line between going too far one way and too far the other way. And as the houses that have already been built, it's really hard to go backwards. You can't go backwards. At the same time, I think we need to make sure we don't go too far forwards. And I think I've said that many times, in the fact that if we, if we go too far forward with too many of these houses, as you said, they will balance themselves out, but it's unfortunate when that happens, because you get yourself in a situation where you have so many foreclosures that it's unsightly. If I had an answer, it would be grand, but I don't. So I'm in the same situation. The answers you get and the comments you get are dependent on which side you sit. When you talk to the citizens and the locals, they definitely are in favor of seeing stronger regulations and less houses that are large. And the folks that own these houses and are seeing revenue from them are in favor of keeping things as they are. So it's a, it's a catch-22, really.
I know the, if foreclosures and things do start happening, that I can't imagine there'd be too much of a market for a 24-bedroom home if the only purpose is for rental, if the rental business isn't there. So it'd definitely be an interesting thought.
Yeah. Then it's going to be our fault for not having done something before now.
Now, Meredith, or Brian, what's it, the state passed that law about the municipalities are limited in what they can do as far as limiting...
Bedrooms.
It says ordinance related to design and aesthetic controls. One of the things that's a non-prohibited variable, one of them is bulk.
Correct.
How do you describe...
Bulk is size. You can't, floor area. You can't, you can't do number of bedrooms. You can't tell them what the outside has to be, or colors, or wood, or anything, unless it's in a historic district. That's exempt.
So is what Nag said doing, is that legal, saying 5,000 square feet?
Yes. That's bulk.
So that's a way we could go, if we just, if we decided to go that way. I'm not, I'm not...
Yes. You could do a set square footage, or you could look at how we did for multifamily dwelling at the floor area ratio. We could look at either of those.
The things are height, of course, bulk, location of the structure on the lot, and buffering and screening. Well, the height we already do, and the location, I guess that would be setbacks, right?
Correct.
And the buffering and screening we do for commercial, well, landscaping, I guess.
Yes.
But it's just not required on a single-family, right? Well, that wouldn't, that wouldn't help us with the size of the building anyway, that one. So the only thing we can control is bulk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the idea of bedrooms and all kind of different crazy things is just figure out if we want to do bulk or we don't want to do anything, is basically what it comes down to, right?
You can, there's, there's several ways you can deal with bulk, and you can combine them with the other things you're allowed to deal with, like bulk and setbacks, and, you know, ratios of that. And rather than just flat numbers, you can, there's several ways you can combine the things that you're allowed to control to manipulate a structure on a lot.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, that most recent house that we were just talking about, the floor area ratio on that house was really low, wasn't it?
Yes.
I mean, it was like point two or something. Yeah. It was really low.
It's definitely a larger lot. I think it's also 75 feet in width rather than 50.
Well, I did some research, trying to look at, you know, is this something unique? I knew it wasn't unique to Cudle Hills, but was it unique to just beach communities? Was it unique to, in North Carolina? And no, is the answer. There's an article here with, that they were, the council in West Hollywood City is looking at zoning changes to address big box houses. So big houses, but that also look like boxes. And so they were, they put in an ordinance where the top level had to be smaller than the bottom level. So it gave some shape, because they were also dealing with an appearance concern as well. There's anti-mansion rules that have been put in place in Los Angeles. Rehoboth Beach, though, it's a beach community, they are dealing with large homes, and looking at some ordinances. They're tying, the way they're addressing it, is they're tying parking spots to toilets. And that, basically, they've increased the number, or they're looking at, they haven't adopted this yet, well, this was back in July, but increasing the number of required parking spaces with homes with more than three toilets. Anyway, it's just, I throw this out because just different strategies that others are looking at. Fort Worth is also looking at legislation to deal with this. I have certainly not complete, I don't think I'm comfortable saying I've completed my research. I would like to do more, but I felt comforted that we're not battling something that others are not battling. And often, I think ideas to address things come from looking around and seeing how others are addressing them. It is a very complex issue. I do think, based on the requests from some of our citizens, as well as the safety factor in this, the one thing that I didn't get very far on with the research is looking at the safety associated with these homes, and, you know, do, are there truly, has it been studied enough to see, is there truly sufficient egress if there were a fire for 24 bedrooms to be vacated in a timely enough fashion? You know, it's, it's, state and federal legislation often comes out after a tragedy, and, you know, a very reactive environment. I hope we don't find ourselves in that situation. And that's why I think it really is important for us to, to look at this, and look at the different dimensions and angles of this, and try to come up with some recommendations or guidance for staff. May not be ready to do that tonight, but I feel like it's almost something that we should keep on our agenda, so we stay focused, and that we continue all to do some research, at least, you know, keep having discussions on this, until we have come to enough consensus to be able to give some guidance. And Chief, not to put you on the spot, but maybe you can help us if we're going to do that. If you have any information that you can come up with related to any thoughts on specific to fire safety for these homes, and when I say not to put you on the spot, I truly, if you have anything right now to share, that's great. But if not, I would love any research that you can forward our way, or things that we should look at for some guidance.
Definitely do some research for that, Mayor. Some of the concerns that I do have is the amount of energy that will be coming from a structure that got well involved, one of those large structures, and how close structures are on each side of it. Limited egress towards one of these structures if they're on fire. Those are some of the problems that I can foresee. And just getting inside those large structures, and searching for people, and searching for fire, will all be some serious challenges that we would have to face with these significantly large structures. We can definitely do some more research for you, and report back to your working group.
Okay. Thank you. I think they're very valid concerns. So I mean, if you think of a 24-bedroom house, if there were two people, and only two people staying in each bedroom, you're trying to, you know, vacate nearly 50 people, so 48 people. That's, when you put in that perspective, it makes you think, really, is, should that be looked at the same as, as a home that maybe has 20 or 25? So I just think that could be part of the angle that we look at. Thank you.
I mean, what, just going back on my notes from the, our other meeting, one of my concerns was the number of parking. So the 24-bedroom that we were just talking about has a far of .31. Our largest is .5, and our average is .41. They are required to have 24 parking spaces, and they actually have room for 30.
Yeah, I remembered that.
So, you know, I think one of our challenges is that, I think, people don't realize how large our oceanfront lots are.
Right. And Willow, not to put you on the spot, but since you're here, you know, this, this really is a topic that we would appreciate input. You know, there's multiple sides and multiple perspectives that should be engaged in this discussion. So as, you know, representing the home builders, you may have comments you can share with us tonight, and we would appreciate other comments if they have them.
And we can definitely talk later, but one of the interesting things that I want to make sure everyone's aware of is, in 2009, the CRC adopted a new rule regarding oceanfront setbacks. In 2009, at the time, we were looking at structures over 5,000 square feet. There are less than two, well, at the time, in 2009, I asked Braxton Davis, who heads up the Division of Coastal Management, "How many structures are we talking about here?" Because we were looking at having the setbacks for residential structures the same as the setbacks for commercial. And typically, it's two times the erosion rate, and we're looking at 30... And typically, it's two times the erosion rate, and we're looking at thirty feet a year or so, sixty feet was typically the setback for a residential structure. So we saw the market, I guess, supported moving more from building hotels, motels on the oceanfront to building larger residential structures because the setback was smaller for residential than it was for commercial. In two thousand nine, because they started seeing larger residential structures of eight bedrooms, ten bedrooms on the oceanfront, and there was an example in South Naggshead that was the poster child for a large structure and what can happen, we had a storm, the pool fell into the ocean, et cetera, et cetera. So the CRC started looking at, okay, we need to look at the setback rules on these large structures. So in two thousand nine, the CRC adopted a rule that said, okay, from here on out, the residential structures are gonna be or setbacks are gonna be graduated the same as they are for commercial. So at that time, in the entire two hundred and seventy-plus miles of oceanfront coastline that we have in North Carolina, there's there were actually less than two hundred structures in the entire state of North Carolina along the oceanfront that were over five thousand square feet. So they adopted this rule that applied to those structures and any future structures over five thousand square feet. And what they came up with was the setback will be graduated every five thousand square feet, the setback then doubles. So you've got sixty feet up to five thousand square feet. If you go to ten thousand square feet, it's a hundred and twenty feet back. If you go five thousand more square feet, then it's another, not double, but a hundred and eighty feet, et cetera, et cetera. So at that time, you had Croatan Surf Club and First Flight Retreat, which were multifamily structures in the commercial type of construction, which had to comply with commercial regulations, safety regulations, et cetera, that we discussed at that time, due to that setback change, you would not see any more multifamily development along the oceanfront. And then what happens the last five, six years, you have one structure built in Carova Beach, the Wild Horse, on ten acres, I think huge, huge lot, that all of a sudden is the new thing, the novelty, it's it's hey, you can have your entire wedding party stay in this house, you can have conferences, the bookings on this house were amazing, and so you've seen, I think, in Currituck, four other structures built like that. I really think, as has already been mentioned, the market is gonna like play out here. Are, you know, if we have more structures like this build, can the market support the rental of these structures? We're gonna see, but right now, we're talking only less than ten total, maybe less than seven, along the entire Currituck and Dare Outer Banks of structures of this size. And you have to have, along the oceanfront, the setback space to support once you get over five thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet. So that structure, Meredith, has got to, there's there's gotta be a pretty big setback there for that structure. So that's a pretty large lot.
It's a big lot.
Yeah, which is unless you're combining lots or something, even still, you have to have that, you know, depth on the on the oceanfront to support that setback. So I think, you know, we're talking about something here, Duck has looked at this issue, Duck looked at actually the the gallons of wastewater and looking at at the law that just passed in the General Assembly, whereas you can no longer limit the size of bedrooms. Within their zoning ordinance, they had regulations specific to the number of bedrooms. Naggshead also had, within their zoning ordinance, a limit of eight bedrooms. The state in North Carolina says you can't do that anymore, you can't control the aesthetics outside of the structure on a single-family residential structure. And but they already had in place in Naggshead, like you've already mentioned, a limit size of five thousand square feet. You don't have, I don't think in Naggshead, the, and as we know with the Beach Nourishment Project, the lots not being as deep as maybe you have here in Kill Devil Hills. So five thousand square foot structures, they already had that limit in place. They didn't go to that limit, looking at bulk size of structures in the town of Duck, but both towns do look at the gallons of wastewater. However, your attorney will tell you that within that law, there there is a provision that says you cannot directly or indirectly control the number of bedrooms of a structure. So controlling wastewater, they may be kind of walking a fine line there and controlling the number of bedrooms. But right now, I think the Outer Banks Home Builders Association was in support of what the town of Naggshead did, we worked with the town of Duck. Again, we're looking at a very small number. The new structure that's up there next to the Hampton Inn, they did go ahead and install sprinkler systems. So they took it upon themselves to pay for the cost of putting sprinkler systems in that very large structure next to the Hampton Inn. So I think, you know, the market's gonna have something to do with this, we'll see how it all plays out. But, you know, we also support private property rights, and when you see somebody that has already developed a structure and then you're gonna tell the next guy, well, you've invested in this property and you can't do it, you know, we have to somehow work together to make it all work for everybody. But I appreciate your time and look forward to further discussion.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Comments, thoughts, discussion?
Nothing else for me.
Want to revisit it again?
Yes, please.
Definitely.
Maybe we'll just keep it going under all business and, okay, keep the discussion going and the research going.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you all. All right, we'll move on then to new business. The first item under new business, well, we actually have three site plan reviews. The first is IG Holdings LLC Storage Warehouse at six oh five West Lake Drive in the Light Industrial One Zone. Meredith, could you introduce, I see, welcome, John, how are you?
Good, good evening.
Good.
In your packet is a site plan to construct a six thousand six hundred square foot storage warehouse and associated site modifications to the existing IG Holdings LLC warehouse at six oh five West Lake Drive in the Light Industrial Zoning District. On September fifteenth, the planning board forwarded the site plan to the Board of Commissioners with two conditions regarding lighting. Those conditions have been satisfied and staff would recommend approval as presented. John Delucia is here to answer any technical questions.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for John?
No, I'm sorry. Looked good to me.
A motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we approve the IG Holdings LLC Storage Warehouse on West Lake Drive in Industrial One Zone.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, the next is, the second site plan review is Super Wings Retail Storage Edition. This is at fourteen oh five South Croatan Highway in the commercial zone. Meredith.
Yes, ma'am. In your packet is a site plan to construct a two thousand one hundred square foot retail storage building and associated site modifications to the existing Super Wings retail site at fourteen oh five South Croatan Highway. On September fifteenth, the planning board reviewed the site plan, forwarded it to the Board of Commissioners with one conditions regarding lighting. That condition has been satisfied and staff would recommend approval as presented.
Great.
John Delucia?
Still here. Any questions for John or discussion from the board?
Yeah.
Okay, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for the Super Wings Retail Storage Edition at fourteen oh five South Croatan Highway as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a good.
Good, John.
All right. The third site plan is the proposed disc golf course on the bomb track.
Yes, ma'am. In your packet is a site plan for an eighteen-hole disc golf course on the forty-four acre western parcel on the bomb track, which is owned by the town. It was reviewed by the planning board in September, on September twenty-fifteenth, twenty-fifteen, planning board forwarded it to the Board of Commissioners with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. All right. And I, Derek Dale.
Derek Dale is here as the site plan preparer.
Just in case they have questions, if you don't mind, and while Derek's walking up, I would like to just give Derek a little peatose. Derek prepared this pro bono, he's part of the Bomb Track Site Committee, he's one of the committee members, and so the the design and our spin in this with other committee members, but thank you.
No problem.
He has done this at no cost to the town, so I appreciate that, all your hard work on this.
No problem.
Thank you. And the initials finally put the site plan prepared by Dad. That question to rest, so.
Derek Anthony Dale.
There we go.
That is kinda cute. Questions for Derek or staff or anyone about this site plan?
This 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 golf course is temporary, right? Like it can be altered and changed whenever with, if ever we decide, is that right?
Yes, that was the intent of the, when we met with the, as the bomb track, that was one of the things that we stated upfront, that, you know, if we decided to do anything with the property now, it's gonna be something low impact, something that can be easily removed, and did not want to dump a bunch of infrastructure onto the property. One of the things that was always noted was, you know, the town does not know what the future is going to bring, and they may need this property for something else one day, thirty years down the road, forty years down the road. And the disc golf course was an option for us to do something recreational with the property that would be very low impact, and if the town ever wants to do or when they want to do something with the property, I'm sure it will happen one day. Baskets can be moved around to accommodate whatever needs to be done, and if you find that you really need to do or want to do something significant with the property, the whole thing can be removed, I mean, in the grand scheme of things. It's very low cost money investment for for the recreation use.
Okay.
And and the infrastructure, just, you know, there's not, there's just, parking lot's gonna be gravel, if the gravel ever needed to be scooped up mechanically, it can be done very easily, and like I said, the baskets can be just lifted out of ground with the abacera.
And I think that the design of this, too, I mean, there's different types of disc golf course. There's some that have the manicured lawns and and whatnot, there's others that are more rustic, like you're going through the woods, and and that's part of the allure, I guess, for those that are pretty skilled, at being able to go around trees or and and hit the basket with your disc. Would not be me, but anyway, so I think that's what's, for the the property that we have in trying to satisfy, what I understood the intent of a lot of the Bomb Track Site Committee members, which was to preserve the natural beauty and and that we have back there, the type of course that has been designed is is to do that, is to be able to to leave as much, and you're, you know, you'll have some clearing of of pathways, but you're not, you're not putting down greens, you know, it's.
Right.
We don't plan on, there's no intent to cut down any trees, really, it's gonna be limbing to for your pathways and maintaining a walk-in, something wide enough just to basically walk yourself through and hit the open spots, leave, definitely will not be touching any oaks or any significant diameter trees or anything like that, just, that's more work.
I have a comment or a question about the possible removal, and this probably wouldn't be for you, it might be for, might even be for Steve, about the removal at some point in time later. If we're taking public money, not not town money that we have set aside, but if we're raising funds for this, say sponsorship, I heard it thrown around that we might sponsor holes, say if somebody sponsors a hole, if somebody's sponsoring eighteen holes, if we've got eighteen different sponsors, and they're sponsoring holes, and and or we've taken money for people, from people for this, and then we decide we want to do something different with this land, how are we gonna explain to these people that we've taken their money, we've we've done this, and now they're not gonna have hole three anymore, or they're not gonna have, you know, a disc golf course anymore? Is that, have we said this upfront, that there's a possibility that this might, that this use might change?
This has come up, and it does need to be, and I'm not part of the the money part, but.
Right.
But I think that needs to be told to whoever's donating upfront, that, you know, this is future, but this is, it is the site that it is, but, and it could change one day, I think, but the whole sponsorships, most of those are on a two-year limit.
Okay.
So they, you know, they pay for two years of sponsorship, and then they, you know, you want to give a timeline of when you wanted to take the project or the golf course offline. I don't think you would want to go out there, have it set up, and then say, a year later, they wanna take it down. You have to, I think you should give some notice, some fairly substantial notice.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a five-year notice or two-year notice, it, I mean, it depends on what ever need to come up with the town, too. You may have something unforeseen happen that you need it.
And I I think it's three years for for the tees and the holes, 'cause I'm looking at doing one.
Okay.
And it, so I mean, I, by the time we start talking about something and potentially put plans in place and and going forward, I think the longer term one, though, Daryl mentioned the parking lot and maybe benches or bike racks or something that potentially could be added, that might be a longer, because of the amount of money that was associated with it, but that's a good question.
Well, and I think in light of, we we do have Bob and Lynn Logan that are here with us tonight, and I know they have been looking at this as an opportunity to make a contribution in memory of their son, who was really into disc golf, and I think this is a conversation at a later point with them to discuss. I think it's pretty clear, and there's been some documents drafted by Steve or that have come through Steve's office for the sponsorship, but I think there's a difference when you're looking at a donation versus a sponsorship, because a sponsorship, it's gonna be laid out pretty set, what the terms are and so on and so forth, and obviously, we would need to be prepared to adhere to those terms. And I think knowing that a family wants to make a significant contribution, like they've indicated they want to do, I think we need to have a discussion with them in the near future, depending on, you know, this is the first step, is getting the site plan approved. Until the site plan's approved, we don't have anything, we haven't had anything concrete to work with, so this is the first step. And then I think it, then we're at a stage where we need to discuss the budget and firm up the budget, and then truly with anyone that's potentially looking at making a donation, come to terms with them, and and please forgive me if I'm wrong, but I think, and back to my Y days, when we had folks that were making large philanthropic gifts, we even had agreements, so to speak, with them for their gifts, so I think there's a way to address that as well. I I think one of our large gifts, you know, was you're committing to, this is gonna be the name of the YMCA for the next twenty-five years or whatever, so it's just, I think there are ways to address that as well, that make it legally compliant and and that everyone knows the expectations and can live up to those.
Yep.
Other questions, discussion?
I did have a couple, I'm doing all the talking. I I think you addressed this at the planning board meeting, I was not able to be at that meeting, but I, Dana had mentioned this in his comments as well, but I'm just a little concerned about the enforcement problems of some of the, I guess, how to word this, being able to enforce security, I guess, on the property, especially at night. I know you had said that it's gonna be closed at night, but it's it's a lot of property, and it's it's open and it's really close to the school. So it's it's a place where I can see, as the mother of a young child, that that kids can go, and I I'm just concerned from a standpoint of us being able to patrol it, police, I I know you've, I s- I saw your concerns, and as a as a parent, it it concerns me greatly. The the football game's right there, they can go right there for short periods of time, come right back. I I just, telling them it's closed is not gonna, you can't put a gate around it, it's a large area, that's that's my concern. I just, how how are we gonna fix that?
Well, I don't think, go ahead.
The property right now is a vacant parcel of land itself, and actually, you can access the property through Run Hill and over from the trail, so.
Yeah, but we're gonna build a parking lot.
I'm just giving it my my two cents, and I've actually, I hike all over Run Hill because I live right back here. I've run on people camping in Run Hill, I've ran, I've seen people camping back in on this property, and I think one thing people on the property is actually, is gonna keep some people off the property, especially like your, the people who have little, the little camping groups that I ran off to other properties around my neighborhood.
And I kinda look at this as Naggshead Woods. I mean, you look at that property, they can't close that off to people at night, there's a parking lot there, there's space, and that's not, I mean, you know, there, if people, if children or adults want to do delinquent behavior, there's plenty of places to find here to do delinquent, you know, I don't think the place is the issue, I think it's it's the folks that are doing that, and and. And, and I didn't realize this was already going on back there, but it doesn't surprise me, because it, it could be anywhere, but I, I don't see this as any different, really, than having access, foot traffic to Nags Head Wood, or vehicular traffic, that then you can go hike a trail, and find yourself wherever you want, to do whatever you want.
Most of the folks are little homeless, like little homeless groups that move around, you'll see them from place to place.
Yeah, I've seen them back there, too.
I think the concerns that Dana has, and I'm sure that it can be discussed further with him in the future, that they can be, each be addressed, and I think they're manageable, like, we have other town properties, parks and ball fields, and I think however we've been able to take care of those properties, and secure them, is the way we could do it here.
And I know, one of the questions that Dana had, and, and I don't know the answer to, but it's, somebody could do, get the answer pretty quickly, and Derek, you may know, because you've been out there more than I, there's a question about cell phone, like, you know, how, cell phone coverage, is it the same back there? Is there, are there any issues with?
I don't think there will be any cell phone issues, I don't know that, I mean, Bombay's got cell phone coverage, the high school's got cell phone coverage, it doesn't really, trees don't really affect it that much, I mean, there are some interference, but I don't know, I can't give you an absolute answer, but I don't imagine that it would affect cell phone coverage. My cell phone works in Stumpy Point.
We could put payphones up.
Comments, suggestions, questions? No? Okay. I guess a motion would be in order?
I make a motion that we approve the site plan for the proposed disc golf on the bomb track as presented.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please sign, I'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right, well, we will move on with it. Did you want to say anything else about this, about the meeting, or no?
About?
Pulling the committee, I think we had talked about if it, if it was a, pulling the committee together, or?
I have to talk to Darryl first.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you again, Derek.
Thank you, Derek.
And Mr. and Ms. Logan, thank you, and we'll be in touch. Thank you very much. Okay, next, under new business, is item number two, the recommendation for bid acceptance for NC-12 water main replacement, phases four and five, and welcome, Pete.
Thank you. Well, I have the unbridled audacity to tell you how excited I am about these bids, and I guess that makes me a nerd, if I can be anywhere near as excited about that as, as I was moved by the visually impaired fishing tournament, what a wonderful thing that was, is, and will be. Very quickly and simply, the bids, without getting into detail, just worked out great, or greatly, I guess, that would take an adverb, wouldn't it? The way we split it, so that phase four and phase five could be awarded to two separate contractors, ended up saving the town about forty thousand dollars, when you add the contingency, and that's always a good thing. I think there's a good fit of the particular phase to the particular contractor. We can never have so much control over that, but I just liked the way it played out. So in addition to the staff, I recommend to you the award of phase four to EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services LLC, and phase five to George Raper and Son, Inc., for the amounts set forth in your paperwork, and would humbly ask you to allow me to have a little bit of money to help the staff oversee these folks. With that, I'll stand by for your questions.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, as per usual, you've done an excellent job, and your, the bids did come in great, that's really helpful for us.
Thank you for that. And by the way, if it is your pleasure to approve this tonight, come mid-spring, we'll have all the good pipe, the entire length of NC-12, from Nags Head to Kitty Hawk.
Wow.
And a lot of the neighborhoods in between the highways will have, with the project we just wrapped up a few months back, and this project, we're gradually working our way out of the old pipe that's approaching the latter parts of its design life. There's no crisis urgency there, but I appreciate your being willing to be deliberate, and work through this, there'll be generations well beyond us that will be the beneficiaries of it. Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Okay. Well, if there's no discussion, questions, or comments, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid acceptance for NC-12 water main improvements, phases four and five, as presented by our town engineer.
I'll second.
Do you need some more specificity there?
Please, if you would just say as outlined in the town manager's new business, too, that, that'll get.
That'll cover all the items.
Okay, it was outlined in the town manager's memorandum.
Thank you.
That's the one I'm seconding.
You're seconding that, great, okay. Any comments, discussion? All those in favor, please sign, I'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Pete, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I do think it's great that we've got two, two companies here that we're able to distribute this to, so, great work.
Take care, good luck.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all, we'll move on then to Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Midget?
I had a fisherman ask me if there was an abandoned boat on our property, or property that's considered the town's property, if we were the ones that were supposed to get rid of it. Are you guys familiar with the abandoned boat where the alligator stays up there off Run Hill?
There's an alligator?
Yeah.
I haven't familiar with the alligator either, or the boat.
Oh, okay, anyway, well, on the backside of Run Hill.
A real alligator?
Yeah, there's been pictures circulating on Facebook, a bit, and I've, know people have seen it with their own eyes, not just.
Oh, wow. Is it on Run Hill, or is it on our property? Because Run Hill's state property.
Well, it's Run Hill, and then there's, there's some land, and then there's the marsh, and then there's the water access, and then there's, it's a, there's an abandoned boat there, and this, you know, I'm not sure if it's our property, but this fisherman has said he's contacted Dare County, and they said it was on our property, not theirs.
I'd have said the same thing.
That's where you're going right now.
Okay, maybe we could get with you.
Sure.
Okay.
That's all I.
Okay, so Debbie, we'll look into that. Yeah, you stumped all of us, I think.
Wow.
Okay, Commissioner Appleman?
Yeah, well, one thing, sorry, I missed the League of Women's Voters Forum, but I was looking at a article that the Outer Banks Sentinel did, and one of the things that they had published in the article, kind of jumped out at me, and I wanted to bring up in the, in the meeting, and just make everyone aware of at least the thoughts that were out there right now. And I've distributed a couple copies of the printed article, so that everybody could see that. But basically, there's the, a statement was made that secret meetings in behind the door, meetings were, were taking place, and I guess the assumption is that it was by us. And I'm, I'm a little annoyed with, with the accusation, and I, I can say that while people do contact us, and we do have interaction with the public, I wouldn't consider that to be a private meeting, or a secret meeting. And in fact, at least in my time in office, we've had one meeting that took place in that room, and obviously at the suggestion of council, where we meet behind closed doors. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of the comment that was, had been made, and I think one of the, the things that I'm most proud of about this board, and, and the way things are being run right now, is that we are all very much accessible, and that we're all very much trying to follow the rules, and do the right things for our community and our town. So basically, with just a little defensive statement on the part of Travis, and that's all I have for tonight.
I appreciate you sharing that, I, yeah, appreciate those comments, and I agree, I think this board's been very vigilant at being transparent, and from the initiation of starting to televise meetings, to, to the input discussions, to the inviting people, you know, really seeking out input on things, so, anyway, I appreciate you bringing that up. Commissioner Reubad?
Nothing, but I do appreciate that, I'll ditto that remark, thank you.
I usually, you know, a lot of, a lot of stuff like that, you kind of take with a grain of salt, but in this case, it goes beyond politics, because it, it attacks the credibility and the integrity of our board, and that's one thing, as you said, I'm proud of, and I know you guys are, too. Everybody, I think, probably knows that a lot of the stuff you hear isn't true, and anytime anybody wants to ask us anything, or talk to us, or you can find us having a meeting behind, no, we're, we're, no, we're out in the open all the time. No, nothing goes on, I promise you.
Anything else this evening?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay.
Sheila, I will add one thing to that, because I'm not sure that people know this, I'm sure, surely they do, this, this is not a full-time job, just, just in case people don't realize that, I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that most of the public realizes this, but most of us sitting up here have full-time jobs, and, and some of us even have a full-time job and another part-time job, so I, I don't, I don't know where that thought came from, but some people tend to think that this might be a full-time job, it's not, so I just wanted to clarify that, sorry, had to get that off my chest, too.
You're fine, you're fine, you're fine. Okay. With that, I'll move on to Mayor's agenda, I have a few items this evening. The first is to revisit the beach driving. I know the information has gone out now, and that the permit is in place, as we're moving into the fall. I had some correspondence with one of our citizens, and he had a really great idea, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it forth when we were discussing this, because it may have been something at the time we wanted, would have wanted to, to look at, but I told him, was it last night, Sunday? Yeah, I was on the phone with him last night, yeah, last night, that I would still bring it up, because we, we may in the future want to look at, look at it, and I wasn't sure if we had already made all of our signage for the accesses where you can drive on, if we had made any signage change yet, changes yet, to talk about the, the permit, but basically what he was saying is, is he was happy we were doing something, I think he was of the group, we had a small group that wanted us to kind of do what Kitty Hawk did, which was just ban beach driving altogether, but I told him that from where we started, that wasn't the interest of the board in going there, and I told him that, you know, we were looking at a compromise. He described that he and his wife, they, this is the time they used the beach the most, in, in the fall, and his concern with, with her was they go out and they put, put the chairs, and it's the, the amount of cars that are going by, or the, the vehicular traffic on the beach. He brought up more of a safety concern, and what his suggestion was, was stopping the vehicular traffic at the pier, because you can't go under the pier, we don't have enough beach or height to drive under the pier. Hopefully, people would realize, maybe they can't go under the pier.
You can try, there's pictures on Facebook right now.
You could try, but it might be concerning, I mean, what happened, I guess it's their fault, I mean, they're liable if they damaged the pier, but, anyway, long story short, his suggestion was stop vehicular traffic there, because otherwise, hopefully, most people that are being safe would stop, get off, and go around, but you're going to have to stop at Kitty Hawk line, anyway, because you can't drive there, so there's not that much more room. Anyway, I just thought it was worth thinking about in the future, we can see how it's going, but I thought it made a good sense, he was just saying, you know, if, if that were the case, then obviously, even though he doesn't live there, he lives for their salary in the town, but he and his wife would choose to go Avalon North, because they know there wouldn't be the vehicle traffic, so he's almost like it's a greater compromise, and, and even more expanding on our common sense approach to this. So I, I told him that I thought that was a great idea, that, you know, we had moved on, I wish I had shared that before we got to where we were. But anyway, so for what it's worth, I did want to bring it up, because I just thought it made good sense, so. And I guess that's where I was wondering if our, you know, if our signage had been made, I know we have already put out the information, and we adopted the ordinance change, and so that would be a change, and so I'm not trying to just fly off the cuff and make that tonight, I'm more just planning as a seed for you all to contemplate, as I have done over the last twenty-four hours, and see if that's something that we do want at any point look at in the future, so.
I would suggest that we, we put it on our tickle file, and bring it back up in the spring, so that if it is something we want to address for next year, we can already.
Do it for the next season, okay, is that?
Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll look at that again, next spring. Okay, thank you, thanks for entertaining that. The second was, and Assistant Chief, I'm glad you're here, the second was a, an email that I received about the Hayman Street. Hayman Street, though, basically, it was, it kind of feeds in with our crosswalk, lighted crosswalk discussion, but it was some safety concerns about crossing at Hayman Street, and putting in some type of push-button cross at, at Hayman. But I, I, I shared with him what we were looking at, and that we would be revisiting the, that we would be discussing in the upcoming meetings about the pedestrian crosswalk signs, and, and the LED, possible LED. His concern, too, was traffic at Hayman on the bypass, and I don't know if we've looked at anything that we can do there, I'm thinking, crossing, I guess from that neighborhood, a lot of people crossing there.
I don't, I myself don't think you'd want a crosswalk there with that lights, like traffic lights, because somebody starts there, all of a sudden, you got lanes stopping all of a sudden.
Right.
Racks would increase across the five lane.
And to even, to even have it considered whether that is heavily, I mean, NC DOT does the study to determine where lights are placed, and where they're not placed.
That's correct.
Traffic signals. Once a road is established, do they come revisit that based on traffic, or only at the request? Do you know, I mean, because, you know, we've been here.
These is a request, when I go through for them to come.
Okay, just a request. And does anyone know, I mean, I don't know, I don't pull out at Hayman very often, so I just don't know how much neighborhood, neighborhood traffic comes from out of Hayman, around that park, to then try to exit there, I don't know if anyone else has a feel for that.
It's near Chili Peppers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the paint store.
It's not directly across, but it's.
What's, what's the, what's the traffic like right of, by Dunkin' Donuts?
Our street, Helga.
Helga, that, and that, which has a signal.
Because that's where I would think that you would drive to.
And then Fifth.
If you were in.
It's in between Fifth and Helga.
Yeah, they might be too close together.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know if anyone else has seen, I think his concern was mainly during the summit, talking about people just running across the street, but, yeah, so we don't, we haven't heard reports that it's any, it happens worse there than any other spot.
That's correct, I haven't been told of any, or had he reported to me.
Okay, okay. Well, I just figured I would bring it up, and if, you know, we'll monitor, and if, if you do hear of anything that's more heavily traversed, so. The next thing is the League of Women Voters Forum, that Travis mentioned, if anyone was not able to attend, they are showing this on the government channel, cable channel one ninety-one. The original dates that were put out by the government channel changed, of when it's going to be shown, so the dates that, I guess officially, are now when our forum's going to run, the Kittle Hills Forum is October fourteenth at nine P.M., that's a Wednesday, Wednesday, October twenty-first at nine P.M., Saturday, October twenty-fourth at nine P.M., and then Friday, October thirtieth at nine P.M. at nine PM. Pass that information on. A reminder too, that we have our public forum, that's the, we do this twice a year, where the board really doesn't have an agenda. It's just an opportunity for citizens to come engage in discussion with us on any, any topic they want to bring forth. I know we had thrown out there, possibly looking at maybe having some discussion again, be visiting. We said we would talk at some point about hotel motel and density. So maybe that's something people want to come have a discussion with us about. Fresh pond and it was out there, crosswalk safety, just any, any thoughts that people have. Large houses, great opportunity.
That would be nice.
It, it really is just a great forum for people to come share with us their thoughts and opinions and suggestions. So we welcome that. And if anyone, and if anyone else has any topics, we typically, well, we will put out, you know, the, the notice for the meeting. And oftentimes, staff will include anything of interest for the board where we are soliciting input. So I think certainly large family, single-family dwellings on the oceanfront would be a good topic, the hotel motel density. Any other thoughts, topics to include in the, in the release meeting notice?
Just let us know.
Yeah, if you do think of something, you can just email Mary or Debbie and let them know. And then the last thing I wanted to address just quickly was fund balance. There seems to be a few questions about trying to understand the fund balance and the intent of fund balance, what the purposes of fund balances. And while the, the local government commission requires that governmental entities, like the towns and, and the county carry, I think it's an eight percent is, is where, like a minimum for your, for your fund balance, that is nowhere near sufficient. And they recognize that too, and then have statements out about that for coastal communities, given the threats that we, that we face. The, we currently, and, and it fluctuates because it, you know, you're basing it on the size of your budget. We currently carry a forty-seven, it's around forty-seven percent is where our fund balance is. And what that means is the amount we have in our fund balance is forty-seven percent of what the total budget size. So, you know, we're thirteen point four six million this year. So our fund balance is about forty, forty-seven percent of that. That, and, and I've used the term rainy day fund just to put it in very simple terms, but it's a reserve account for multiple reasons. One, if we did have some type of, of catastrophic issue, let's say a storm came in, the town's able to use that, those funds to operate on while we're either waiting for FEMA reimbursement, or there's some storms that we won't get FEMA reimbursement and we have to come out of our own coffers. And you don't budget for that. We don't put that in an annual budget. So you need to have a sufficient fund balance for that. Your fund balance also affects your bond rating. And you all know, we just recently refinanced our public works. We were able to get a lower, lower interest rate. Well, anyway, your interest rates, your bond rating, that's, that's influenced by the health of your town, as, as demonstrated by your fund balance. Just for comparison, you know, so people don't think, wow, you're sitting there with forty-seven percent of your budget, you know, that, that may be a lot. But it's actually, you know, we should be striving in that, you know, forty to fifty percent to be able to operate five to six months if, if we had something catastrophic. But NAGSAD currently is at fifty-six point ten is their fund balance. Southern Shore is at seventy-nine percent is their fund balance. Kitty Hawk at fifty-nine point seven. NAGSAD actually even has a policy that requires them to have at least fifty percent of their annual budget and, and their fund balance. The county, which I know has been a great concern to them, they're currently sitting between twenty and twenty-one percent, but they're very concerned about that. They will, if you talk to the county commissioners, they're acknowledging that that's not where it needs to be. So anyway, I just thought it was, was worth bringing up if any of the citizens were confused. And I had some people questioned, just, you know, just wanting a little bit more information on fund balance. And so I thought it was important to share that, that I think we are being very good stewards to try to ensure that we have a healthy fund balance because it's so important to the financial stability of, of our town and our ability to respond if there's catastrophic or, or just minor issues that we need to address. So I appreciate the board's vigilance in, in working to build our and maintain our fund balance. Oh, and the last thing I have is I had the pleasure yesterday of attending an Eagle Scout ceremony for one of our KDH residents, Kyler McCaliff. His mom is Chris. She's a single mom of two boys. Her son Kyler is now at UNC Wilmington and they brought him back. I guess he was here on fall break and they surprised him with a ceremony yesterday. He had no clue. And there were about thirty people there recognizing his, his efforts. He'd been working on it for twelve years and just a remarkable thing. So I was, felt very fortunate to be a part of that and represent the town and, and give, give him our accolades for, for all his hard work. And with that, that's all I have. Town manager's agenda?
The name this evening.
Town attorney's agenda?
Nothing for you tonight.
Okay. The consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Two items on the consent agenda. The first, the minutes from the September twenty-first, twenty fifteen meeting. And the second is just to report the consensus of the board for the waiving of the building permit fees related to any storm damage caused by the, even though we didn't actually have the hurricane incident, there was some, some damage to some properties on the oceanfront. And we've done this in the past. And it's for a period of a year when people come into the planning department and they document that it was caused by the storm, then they, or issued their building permit with, without any fees. So approval of the consent agenda this evening would place this in the record.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor, please sign. I'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Our public has dwindled a little, but anyone that's left, if you would like to speak, we would love for you to do so. Anyone? No takers? Okay, I think y'all are ready to get out of here. Well, then we can. The next thing is just a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Anything else? All those in favor, please sign. I'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all for being here. Hope to see you tomorrow night at the Ice Cream Social.
Yes.
Thank you.